No, no, no. I managed. Seventy. Bill again in the service.
Oh.
I managed a.
So that's what you did in the military?
No, I was a project manager. Well, I was a warrant officer and I oversaw. Joint Task Force for all the big order, big Leonard number organizations around the world.
Yeah.
And I just happened to be involved with some of the largest. And so one of our projects entailed managing. Unmanned aerial vehicles or drones. And we had seven of them. And that was quite big.
Wow.
Yeah. And then I managed. Five wind turbine parks, just over a gig of power in the gorge for two years. I was there. Only person from the outside to come in to management, manage one part. Broke global records with one part, jumped into a second park and then three more parks in the gorge. And. Just managed all of that in the process. They had never really brought somebody from the outside to do that big of a project before. And it went really well, so.
Excellent. How is you?
I is here.
He is here. Hi, John. How's it going? You're not feeling good?
Yeah.
What are you feeling like?
Well. Under the weather or tired?
Yes.
Both. Yeah.
Did you party this weekend? Is that why you're tired?
No, we actually, we actually slept almost all day on Sunday. Both of us. We just said it was. Not many. But it's not good.
Are you looking at your minutes?
No, I was gonna look here and then tell you.
Okay.
It's so much easier to do it from.
Tonight's meeting will be very quick. There's a. We don't have a lot, you know, but I wanted to get those ordinances done where so we can bust out. Budget stuff.
We're doing budgets next meeting?
And we will have our budget meeting on the eighteenth of June. Where we all get together, just us, the budget commission, committee, committee rather. And then we will hear it. We'll have a special meeting to hear the budget following week.
And that's during the daytime or during the evening?
Um, eve- evening at six. So the eighteenth of June is our budget committee meeting and then probably the twenty seventh. Or the twenty sixth of June, we will have a public hearing. And we can do it during the day if everybody wants to do that. Doesn't matter.
You said the twenty sixth and twenty seventh or one or the other?
One or the other.
We don't know.
Do you have plans?
So even my wife finds out I have a plan. So I know we have a trip out of town. I don't know which weekend that is on. But that's, um, I don't even know the date.
Yeah, um, the twenty sixth is a Thursday and the twenty seventh is a Friday. All right.
Then I'll have already shared everything you do.
Okay.
Somebody or the mayor.
Okay.
I've already done to all of it.
Okay.
On the first page of minutes?
Yes.
Under council liaison?
Yes.
Attended the IBF D board meeting or the witness to the event where Lieutenant Pfeiffer.
Okay, I'm ready.
P F I E F F E R, I believe.
Okay.
Um, and I don't understand this. Where Lieutenant Piper's appointment as the power chief?
Yeah, I didn't really, I couldn't catch what he was saying. Um, I, I didn't know what he got appointed as. Do you know?
I don't have any idea.
Yeah, I don't either. So maybe he can, he can.
Either that or you could just ask John Holmes. But yeah, and I'm pretty sure that's the right way to spell Piper, but you may have one.
P F I E F F E R?
Yeah.
That's what I, okay, got it.
And we already voted on the union bargaining agreement?
Um, no, that was just a letter of agreement. Um, allowing non-union members to use the unions insurance.
And that was just a request to them for their approval and then it comes back after their approval?
No, that's, we requested of them. They said yes, as long as we got your guys' approval. So it's showing that you approve it. That's done deal.
It is done, okay. And that's not on tonight's, right?
No, that was last meeting. Did I not take that out of your thing?
I think it's still in there.
Under minutes.
Oh, in the minutes. Okay, understood.
It's on mine. I printed the old one and made it some notes, so.
Okay.
Um, I take it Jamaicans, your place got whatever issue they had resolved.
They are asking, tonight they're asking to use amplified sound in, um, let's look.
But at the park or at?
No, at their restaurant. Yeah.
At their shop?
Yeah.
During normal operating hours?
Yes, um, so, and they have a place in the back where they wanna have the events. And they're little places for seating and stuff.
But at ten o'clock at night.
Perfume on Saturday. It's a Saturday night.
So it's not here. Okay. I just wanted to make sure.
They were playing their music last summer, remember?
Yeah, they were playing it the other day too. It wasn't.
Wasn't too loud?
No, I was at the Napa Hardware Show and I was like, I haven't been down over there.
Yeah, yeah. So we had a couple of complaints, you know, and so I just asked them to turn it down a little bit and they were fine with that, so. I think it's bested, you know, like something's going on.
Yeah, draws interest. I just figured they had a break in a while back, I thought. Break in and stuff stolen.
At the Jamaican place? Oh.
Down.
Well, that's terrible.
They had a rough go at it.
Don't they have, don't they have bars on their windows already at that shop?
Yeah, yeah. But it's, it's all construction, all wood. They went into the front door, I think.
They did.
Yeah.
Probably really easy to do that.
And then the peanut blood, we're, we're talking about that again, pushing it out or?
We shoot it out till July. And then we have to do it.
Things have changed about already too.
I don't know that I've heard anything. Um, the last, go ahead.
There was an official release on the website saying that.
The bio, they have something to do with biological reviews?
It did, but they're, what we're, what we're looking at right here, it hasn't changed any of this.
Yeah.
Changed a bunch of other federally covered and governed stuff associated with it. There, and they said until further notice, right?
And they just keep saying that.
Um, that they're moving on.
It's okay. I have to go in.
And everything else is still in the tape.
Yep. Hello, Mayor.
Hello.
This is a, this is a two jug net night.
Oh, yay. But no sleep. Sleep on.
You didn't go to sleep?
No.
Well, it's gonna be easy.
Thirty, thirty-two hours down.
Just remember, it's adopt an ordinance. We adopt ordinances, we approve resolutions. So tonight we're adopting, adopting. Why didn't you go to sleep? What time did you get here?
What time did I get back from?
Yeah.
Trip? The bus pulled in at three. I drove, so I was following the bus. Uh, we got unloaded by three thirty. Was home by three forty. And sitting at my desk working by five forty-five.
You just couldn't go to sleep? Um, how, is this the one that was, Lisa said something like eight hours away?
It was on a bus, nine and a half.
Wow.
So we went, uh, to, uh, Peppner.
Peppner, that's it.
All the way up by Pendleton. So, and then the fire alarm went off at five twenty in the morning at the hotel. So everybody was up at five twenty. And then we were practicing by eight thirty at Madras High School. There's another four hours in state at Madras, set up at a band. And then we, uh, we did the final wave. Got to the, the, the high school for the game, met one forty-five. Played very tough game and then straight back.
Did you win?
No.
No.
Lost. Six-three. Very good game. Um, do good move battling. That's great ball. So.
Um, so what's next?
Nothing. Done.
You're done?
Yeah.
Oh. Oh, cause you lost?
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, it would have been second round tomorrow, third round on Friday. Semifinals on Tuesday, finals on Friday.
That'd have been like retarded, bro.
We couldn't have pitched it. There would have been no way. No one can. It's the same thing. By the time you get beat, everybody's pitching guys that haven't pitched all year. No one in two-way baseball has sixty seconds pitch a ball. Yeah. So it's, it would have been rough. We, uh, we came out, we scored three nothing in the top of the first. They scored three nothing in the bottom of the first, scored three in the bottom of the first to tie it. They scored three in the bottom of the second. There is not another run in the fourth.
Very good. As good as the one that we had before, right? Before that one?
No, if we would have played as well as we played here, we would have beat them pretty easily. But it's, uh, Lee, his kid was sick. And he's, he's our ace. And so he, he didn't even make the two innings pitching. I pulled him in the second inning. So he had a sore throat and sinus just were bugging him and he did no energy. He cried, but you can tell he just had no energy. The mechanics were off. But I mean, we battled. We have, we out hit them. We had eight hits to their four. We just didn't have hits with runners on. So we, we, you guys on base, it's been scoring, so.
This is too little.
No, it's the end that plugs into your laptop.
Where does this go?
It's supposed to be another part of that.
This is all I got.
Okay, they're saying you're the wrong one. Oh, no, they sent you a three point five. You don't need the three point five. Need the RJ forty-five. You need to write down the RJ forty-five or you can just get a three, yeah, you just get an adapter that goes from a three point five to an RJ forty-five.
Well, why don't I, I can return it, cause I asked her before she ordered it if it says returnable and it said yes. So, so what am I asking for?
In RJ forty-five.
And that is this thing?
No, that's a.
This thing.
That is that on steroids. You see the giant?
Yeah, I noticed. I was like, there's no holes this little.
That's an RJ forty-five.
Okay. But I do want this.
Yes, that's what plugs into your laptop.
And it's gonna plug in over here, this thing?
Well, you need a USB. They give you a USB C. They send you the wrong thing all the, altogether.
That's what I thought you said USB, cause I said, okay, wait a minute, where's all my holes? Okay, so.
Yeah, they sent you a USB C.
Well, if I have a USB and plugged into my laptop, then I don't have any, oh, I can take this one out. Got it.
That's what I'm saying, I'm going home from here, sleeping. And hopefully have someone relax today tomorrow working.
I need, I need you in here for fifteen minutes to sign stuff unless you wanna sign tonight before you leave.
Whatever you, you mind filing?
You think the same place? Well, I'll just, I'll find it.
I can find it.
But that's what you did the last time. Oh.
Ian, how are you?
Fighting blood sugars.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah, it's low.
I know what that's all.
With some candy?
I just had some.
You need to have some protein with it.
I've been well with it. It's just lack of sleep, so not being able to regulate. Adapt.
Adopt.
Adopt.
Did I write adapt?
No, I just opened it.
Okay.
Um. I may wanna pull something out of the consent agenda, just so you know.
Okay. What? There's only two things.
I know, fully amplified sound up.
Okay, why?
So I want description about it.
Okay.
I know we can't have a discussion about it. I'll, that gets pulled out.
Oh. Is there something we can discuss?
Uh, yeah, I just, the, the lack of detail in the frequency.
That's what I thought. In fact, I was going to ask her exactly the same thing for the same reason.
Yeah.
Because it isn't specified where it is and it's specified.
And, and all they say is six to ten, could be weekly, could be bi-weekly.
Well, she's gonna have an event on June fourteenth, so we need to, if we could at least approve that, and that's gonna be outdoors.
Right.
So she's gonna be playing music. Um, and then weekly or every other week on a Saturday between five to ten PM.
Amplified sound doesn't say it's gonna be indoor.
No, it's outdoors. It's gonna be out back. Where they have a few tables and they'll be playing some music. Like, and it won't be live music. It'll just be music.
But none of that detail is in there.
It's all right here. I just read to you.
No, no, none of the detail about it. It's gonna be live music.
Well, I'm giving it to you. She told me.
Okay, but it's, but it's not in the app.
Okay, guys, I stand at the counter and I tell these people what they need to tell me, what, what they're, you're gonna be asking. What I should do then is have them come to these meetings for fifteen minutes. That would be great.
That, but you just answered my questions, cause those were my questions. My question was.
And I, and I have, that's why I said, is it something we can discuss?
Yeah.
I really do think having these people come to this meeting would be very helpful, because sometimes there are cost trees.
You, yeah, but mine you just answered.
It wasn't in there. They have lives. They're working five, six days a week, you know, coming to a council meeting is if not their forte.
Cause I, like, I know that, uh, replay, that's the name of it, right? You see, replay now. They just opened up a bar in the back. And they're doing live music three days a week, but it's indoor. So there's no, there's no requirement. It's part of their establishment.
Came in and asked about it.
Yeah, no, Russell's a great guy. Um, I'm, I'm not against it. It just seemed, it just seemed open-ended.
Um, does events in the back of his building. And the first few times he did it, he came into City Hall and asked permission. And then I noticed that he hasn't been doing that anymore, so.
Cause it's, is it, it's inside?
It is not. It's outside and it's crunking up and bad.
Along with this whole air.
That's what I sense. Yeah. So.
Hello.
Um, Ethan will be attending via Zoom.
Yeah.
How's Tina?
You know, kind of tired of the, hanging in there.
How's Michael?
Well, he was scheduled to, the goal was for him to come home on the twenty ninth.
I know. Is it still?
He had fall early Sunday morning. Which said, he's back at least a week. So. Yeah, I love getting called four thirty in the morning. My husband just fell.
Now, did he fall out of bed or was he trying to?
He was trying to get to the commode, which was right next to the bed, but he wasn't strong enough. And he said the floor was wet. There was something on the floor. His feet slipped up from underneath him and he went down hard.
By the time you got there, the floor was clean and so there's no way to move it.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
Is this where Lindsay was, you know, or was it just went to his room or something?
Yes, totally not related to this at all.
But it's, it's along the same path.
No, she, there is a code. We had a code that we got rid of. No, we don't want to allow junkyards. And we don't allow like recycling centers, like big ones. Um, and she's always been nervous. But apparently now she's gotta move that thing, right?
Yeah, just.
So I, I responded and I CC'd you.
I thought.
Um, we can't really give her any detail. We're certainly not gonna make any promises until we know exactly what she wants to do. But I don't think, if she keeps it in the same manner that it is right now, it's totally fine.
Yeah, location wouldn't matter, as long as it's, you know, tucked away.
Yeah, and that's what I said in my email. I said it would be, I think, asking you to keep it out of sight would be an appropriate request.
What was this about?
Um, Lindsay has to move her recycling pile.
And drive thing.
From behind Jeff's thing. Just profit. Just the movement. So she's looking for a new place and she's just trying to get her ducks in a row and know what the rules are and what we will or will not approve. And that's what I told her. I said, we can't really not approve or approve something until we know exactly what you're doing.
Well, so she has to move, Ivy can donate to a different location, apparently.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was Jeff's call. Yeah, that's Jeff's call.
But, um, the Cape Junction, uh, farmer's market is, is begging them to come down and be down in that area there.
In Kirby?
In Kirby, yeah, but the problem is that there's.
No security.
Yeah, it's even worse.
It's in, yeah, it's in Conex Box.
What is there to break into?
Yeah. And they have all of their storage in there, gloves and bags and.
Yep.
Racking and all this stuff that they have to carry for each type of labeling. And there's actually probably three or four racks of stuff in there that they have. Some of the safety, put their first aid stuff.
I don't think I've all the options since we can't have one, you know, in that area there because they've got the whole land and the people that own the lands that absolutely take.
We, we can have it as it is now.
Yeah, we're not saying no.
It's not a recycling center. It's a collection.
Where?
Right, we don't have, and that's our, and that's not our choice or our decision, or we shouldn't be involved in that part of it. She just needs to let us know where she thinks it might.
She wanted to talk to the gentleman who owns the Speedy Mark. He bought the old auto shop.
Right behind it.
The old welding shop?
Yep. Yeah, yep, yep. He bought that and he may be right in that position to offer something.
That's not, is that Jimmy Sue? Who owns that?
I do not know.
It, it was.
And then he sold it.
Across the street.
Yeah, the Gunther sold it.
Yeah, he did. I tried to buy it.
It's too little in there. I, I feel claustrophobic when I go in that store.
Oh, Speedy Mark? Absolutely.
I've never been.
So cluttered.
It just scares me just to see it from the outside.
Go out there in the morning about six AM, all kinds of it.
So I did a no-no. I commented.
Say in front of me?
Sure, I commented on it.
Here?
Oh, yeah.
On Facebook that I absolutely had enough of.
Of what?
Parents?
What's that?
Was it parents?
No, someone absolutely full of shit. Saying that they, and they use a false name, saying that they had come in here and that they had been told repeatedly that they didn't have a say. And Ethan said, well, why don't you come to a council meeting? And that's when they said, I've been there. I, I was.
That guy?
Yeah.
That same guy?
And so, no, different guy. And so I, I ended up popping up and said, I was a council member for the last four years. I've been a mayor for the last five months and I've never seen you. And did you read it? And I went off. I, I absolutely went off. Thank you for your response.
It's code names. It's like Elmer's, Mama, there's Mama.
Yeah. Your response.
We, we should get grants to have our own police department so they could code enforce. This is all over code enforcement because a homeless encampment had moved behind.
You can't, yeah.
I, I, I know.
There's nothing okay about that sentence. You should get grants to have police. Yeah, that's a ridiculous thing.
You saw my response.
Yeah, I thought it was excellent.
It's, uh, I, I was just done.
Every so often, we go round and round about the idea of a police force. And as soon as anybody crunches any numbers, they see that it's.
Mostly the people that are making comments are like this person, making a comment about getting a grant.
Oh, and why don't you?
They don't, well, they don't.
Called out Mankuso, because Mankuso goes, you don't even live in city limits. You have to say. And then Mankuso goes, you don't hear me bitching. I don't live in city limits. And she go, or this person goes, but I'm in the urban growth boundary.
That doesn't matter.
Great, good for you. Yeah.
Woo-hoo. I wonder what, so this person.
We don't have, she, or they said, if you're looking for my name in your previous notes, you won't find it because I'm using an A.
Well, that's really great, because if you don't have the guts to speak up for yourself, how are you going to participate in a process?
Did you read it in the GMM response?
No, I didn't.
He talks smack about the city, about.
I was done.
I didn't see comments or something like that.
About, um.
About what Jesse said or about what the other guys?
The whole, Brad, the thing about it is, is the number one duty of the city council is to take care of the taxpayers' money.
That's what I said.
You know, and.
And I, I.
And the number two duty is to make sure that they have water and sewer.
So what?
Duty. We have a duty. They have a duty.
I'm funny.
The, the number two duty is to make, they do.
So they can go duty. So they can take care of number two, and number one.
It may.
Well.
Well, I was, I was reading that. I was gonna come. I don't know. No, I better not come in, because.
Well, it's just. I was tempted, but I know better.
We get this, we get this all the time though in City Hall. I mean, just, you know, I mean, they don't, they come into the counter and say stuff like this. They just don't know. They're, they're uneducated. They're not, they have no exposure to how government works.
So I wanted to know what the city was gonna do about it, so he came in here or called on a shirt, not your.
Yeah, and I talked, I talked to Lisa. Lisa came for the high school to give me the signed check.
And he asked what the city was gonna do about it and.
And what was this about? What, what was this challenge specifically?
There, there was a homeless encampment that overnight had popped up behind the fence on private property behind the old radio shack. And before this person posted, even went out, it was gone. They had moved on.
So this person doesn't read the newspaper or have any idea what's going on in the world around them in regards to homelessness and lawsuits?
Process is, is see something, somebody complains, the city sent the property owner a letter.
Think they're moved it.
Allegiated by the property owner, the property owner is just having to pay a fine.
Yeah, but in that case, in the case that he's referring to where there was a homeless cap set up on somebody's personal property, that's a homeowner's issue. We can't help that at all.
But also I stated, and I. And I, and I also stated that it requires city resources and we are a very limited staff. And there is protocol that has to take place with notifications that have to go out. And we don't have staff sitting here on a phone saying, hey, you have a nuisance violation. You have people trespassing on your property. Go take care of it. That's not the business that we are in.
No, I think also, a real easy response would be if you have an issue with something like that, call the sheriff's department, because they're the people that would have to deal with that.
The property owner, where they're squatting is the one that has to deal with it.
I'm pretty sure it's gone.
Well, it may be, but.
Well, so the property owner has to do something about it. They have to call the sheriff's department. Sheriff's department comes out, he there.
So this was.
The owner would have to file, the sheriff isn't gonna come out. First thing he's gonna do is look for a trespass order. And if there's not one associated to that property, he's not coming. There's no point.
He can request them to leave then.
Not on personal property.
Sure, this is.
I know this for a fact. We go through it all the time, constantly.
So how do you get rid of squatters on your property? So I know how I do. How are regular people supposed to do it?
They have to file a trespass order.
You can do it on your own property.
And then the sheriff will come out just like that and deal with it.
But you've gotta file the paperwork. But you've got to file the paperwork first. So you actually have to trespassing yourself.
Yes, as a property owner.
Yeah.
You don't have to have signs that say no trespassing, nothing like that. You just have to file a trespass order.
Passed the guy like last week.
Yeah.
From where?
Someone called this person out on why they're using an alias. So five hours ago, they said, hello, CJ, Elmer here. Some people, that's why I don't have a profile. I use an alias. So it's not so I can hide and say.
I have permission from.
Uh, but no, you had an account hack. You stole it. You might guess differently. But she, they're absolutely hiding.
On my property. So he had.
Well, that's too bad. But it sounds like your response is good.
Have the truck on my, his property and then he walked on my property with a shotgun and turkey calls.
Let's talk about this stuff.
In the city limits.
Or any other time, not.
So, yeah, right.
And I'd already called the department and had a conversation before I.
Just because he's.
Well, we get, we hear, um, we hear that starts for closures all the time. What?
Where are you?
Right there.
Right out of there.
And he made a mistake.
But that's.
Very uneducated.
Living, right?
North of that. Straight yard bro.
It's not.
Doesn't live here.
Yeah, we're.
If you own property, you have.
We're surrounded.
That is not.
Probably a hundred yards.
Easy. You have residence here. You got it.
But a lot of the sounds.
If you, if you're registered, you don't have residence.
But the trouble is, there are houses.
He doesn't need to vote.
Like a single house, surrounded by.
So it's.
City.
Okay. Want to see that?
How do you make?
Um, it's a county, it's a county lot. It's a county lot. And so they can do whatever they want here because they're not interested in the order.
Which has to, you.
With his toes.
All of them in that. One right.
You're gonna hide that.
All the things that, that you have.
Yeah, but he needs to be moving.
The whole, you know, that, and this is my responsibility.
But it goes straight up, straight up. Actually, now it was all around. To the all, all city, with these, these.
I just wish you would be careful.
How do they do that? There, there. Who knows?
Like you have a, this park, it may be.
How did that happen?
Okay.
They were probably there for the.
Off the.
Current ranges.
Yeah.
And when things were developed. The city.
And so I don't have, Ethan's not going to be able to hear very well because he was on Zoom. So you guys need to speak really clearly.
And, yeah. It's horrible.
All right.
Um.
Face today is a little hard.
You're just tired. That's all.
No.
You're going, let's see, what day is it?
I can quicker when I.
Okay. We are live.
For you?
I am. I'm all set on you.
Welcome to the May twenty seven, twenty twenty five meeting of the common council of the city of Cape Junction. Please stand and remove your hats for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it is sworn. Patient.
Of the South.
In the middle. But the team justice. That's not fair.
With it.
That's right, yeah, we're. This evening before you, we have council position one, Ethan Lane via Zoom. Ethan was up there, correct?
Nope, not yet.
Not yet. Will be hopefully. Council position two, United Nations government. Council position three, Jean Anne Miles. Council position four, Jason Peters, and I am Jesse Dugis, your mayor. Before we begin, let me remind those attendants that it is important for the recording of this meeting to be clear and understandable. Please silence any noise producing devices such as cell phones at this time. If you would like to have a conversation among yourselves, please feel free to please leave the chamber, head down past the double doors. You can come and go as please. Also a reminder, if you'd like to speak tonight during the public comment, you'll need to fill out a yellow public comment card, found on the table in the back of the room. The meeting is open for general public comment, which is again to item four. You should first bring your complete card up, hand it to Becky or city administrator. You'll be called to approach the podium. You'll have three minutes to make your comments. First up, uh, again, item number one, consent agenda, looking for a motion to approve. Second?
Hi.
No, it's not an eye to.
Second, the most.
I second it.
Any further discussion? Council two, help Peters on.
Okay, good. Thank you. Uh, that's Teresa Stover.
Uh, council position two, any comment or any discussion required for, is it an item one?
No.
Uh, council position three?
No.
Council position four?
No.
The mayor does not. Uh, roll call. Position two.
Hi.
Three.
Hi.
Four.
Hi.
Mayor votes, uh.
Motion to approve consent agenda passes four zero.
Council liaison reports, uh, Ethan's still not on, so we will go, uh, let's go in reverse order. Uh, Jason, council liaison under course.
Absolutely. Uh, so I met with a district meeting, I guess, weeks ago. Um, it was a open meeting for parents and for staff, uh, teachers specifically, um, at either three schools along with, um, two board members from the district board and the, uh, uh, head of the district office, I don't know. Yes, Mr. B. Yeah, so Dave Donwood was there. Uh, it was an open forum for parents to discuss some of the complaints that he had seen and, uh, then I raged about on Facebook. Uh, this was specifically made for an opportunity for them to come out and voice what's going on and get some feedback from teachers. Uh, unfortunately, we only had one, one set of parents show up. And during this, we had some great discussion, lots of really, uh, great comments and, uh, clarification were made around some situations. And the disappointing part were the parents that were very upset around some so-called bullying incidents, uh, did not show at all. We were very discouraged about that. However, uh, we continued to open the floor and discuss, uh, current things that are affecting teachers, current things that are affecting parents. Uh, and our lovely, uh, lovely attorney for the city of Cape Junction was there in representation on the school board. And he'd actually had an ask for us as city council members, and that was to compile what we thought would be a great connection for us as city members in the city of Cape Junction, along with businesses and people to connect with the schools specifically. How can we engage schools? Um, he felt that there was no, and several of the teachers as well, felt there was no direct connection or communication, right? Between the schools and us. And somebody brought up the individuals from the high school, the, uh, on the political team, uh, students talking about the politics of school, representing student council. Uh, he thought that was a brilliant idea. He thinks we shared that at more than just the high school. He thought that made a great, a great idea at the middle school as well. Uh, we've had discussions about, uh, council at the middle school level, but that's, you know, that's still, I mean, uh, it's not something we've achieved yet. But the question was, how can we engage? What can we do from the city standpoint to help facilitate ongoing to the schools? So I'm hoping that we can work together and find some answers and solutions to that, to, uh, to better communicate.
Perfect. Yeah, that might be, uh, you know, with Jean Anne's background in teaching and you being a current teacher, that might be something that you potentially theme up on.
It would also be just really good for us to have town halls.
Yeah.
And open up, especially to the political science students or, or the upper grade.
I will touch real quick, since it is relevant. We are going to be doing a shadow the mayor day for a student from, uh, from the high school and that'll be taking place, I think we're doing it this next month. So it's the high school, the high school's gonna pick, they want to meet a pick. I said, I'm not picking. You produce one and they can shadow and I'll spend the entire day in city hall and they can learn the behind the, uh, behind the doors.
I'll have to be good on that.
You will have to. I think, a while. Uh, Jason, is that it?
That's it.
All right, Jean Anne, you're up.
I don't have anything.
All right. Uh, yeah.
I actually do because I was. Um, so first of all, uh, parking, we had our last meeting was held at Jubilee Park. And we walked the area that was going to expand. The first phase of the, um, movement is probably, I think it will, probably will be the, um, amphitheater being moved and we're going to, probably I'm using that area that has the pathway that goes through to the old stage road. And it has a natural incline, which will be where we plan to build a terrace seating area with the amphitheater facing the terrace area. Um, it, it, it was a lot of fun to walk that area and we see that we can look and talk about stuff. We realized that there was actually room and more parking there. So a lot of discussion was held, um, by what type of surface we needed to have. Uh, we talked about the bathroom, if you need to be there. We talked about the, um, path for accessibility, um, so that people with wheelchairs can walk, they can get into it. Um, and then of course, the subject came up in funding because obviously they've all had to be paid for, um, which we're going to do. But that actually segues into the next meeting that I attended, which was named to Cape Junction. And when I was telling them about what our plans are for Jubilee Park, uh, Amy said, well, why do you have to deal with funding? I have grants that are specifically for projects like parks and rec. So John, that is something that, uh, Ethan F. would even use on, um, they have grants that can help pay for things like parking lots and, and accessibility paths and, and other things. Um, it was, it was very enlightening, um, to talk to them and, uh, I was really happy that I was able to get to that one. Um, the other thing they reported on was the fact that, um, they are. Oh, yeah, okay. On September tenth, they planned flowers in downtown. I don't know if anybody saw that. Hopefully we're out there working flower boxes, which is really nice. Um, also, uh, they are, uh, our lot is coming up, I believe, is on the first, it's next Monday, I believe. It's, I apologize, there's not a lot coming up, but it's the first one. Um, and then they also talked about the fact that we're not going to have a soapbox therapy this year. Um, the reason behind that was because it falls to mainly the efforts of Amy and, um, the girl from Philly and Baker's that they kind of were just here to, you know, put some money on. Um, so because Danlon Pinto gives another thing, they can't have him help. So it's just the two women, they did the last one and it was just, it was too much. It was too much on their foot. Um, so they plan not to have a soapbox therapy, which was, when I was segueing out, the next meeting that I went to, which was a, uh, indoor commerce. And I was telling them not to, and they got all up in arms and they said, no, 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 we must have the soapbox therapy. We've got some good people that will help. So, um, Megan and Monique were going to talk to Amy about, you know, keeping going and having other people use the, the listening hearing because Amy, you know, like all the truckload of regals. You know, and having a handful of regals herself. So, um, so Chamber Commerce is planning on doing that now. Oops, lost my, um, notes here. Uh, barely one more.
Double that phone.
Huh?
Did you?
Yeah, no, head back. Okay, so, um, all right, so the first concert in the park did be on the nineteenth. And the, uh, band that's been playing is called Thirteen Deep Box and they are a cover band, which is great. We actually listened to it. He kept saying we want some cover music because everybody wanted to sing along to songs they know. So those, those three deep boxes will be first man and there will be having more cover bands this year, um, so that people, you know, we like a lot of, of new music and original sounds, but we also want songs that we can sing to. Um, let's see, the other thing was they are having a, uh, they talked about the dinner at the vineyard, which is being held at on June twentieth. This is a Friday, day after the first concert. And this is going to be a benefit for the boarding girl club, which is Bridgebee Winery, um, fifty dollars per person. That's going to be a nice menu, uh, third wine and brew. So this is what I know now. That's it.
Nice.
Suzie.
There. So, uh, R B A C P, they met, uh, for the first time in a few months. I did not attend a meeting that did go over, just refreshed again. Um, they're in their planning stages for upgrades and construction for the next two years, uh, nothing on our side of the road valley. So that's one of the reasons why I haven't spent my time going there. It's, uh, I make sure if I see something in the agenda that's going to be relevant to us. That I can, um, or if I have a, a comment or complaint, I make sure that I email it in. But nothing, nothing as of yet. I am planning on attending this next one. There are some, uh, some one ninety nine improvements that I think need to be addressed through Cape Junction, coming into Cape Junction. Um, and so I will make sure that I mean that one as well. Um, and then the mayors, the Rogue River mayor got together and contacted all the other mayors within a couple hundred mile radius. And we have all agreed to start meeting monthly. So all of the mayors will meet either in person at a rotating location or via Zoom monthly, just to go over details on what are happening and try and be neighborly. And so that is, uh, that is it for my liaison. Be easy on, be a tough, tough day. Becky, you need, oh, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I forgot the, uh, Chamber Commerce also talked about the backside initiative and, um, they did the survey of the area for the lighting, to see how much light pollution there was. Um, amazingly, there was very little. The only light pollution that was generated was based upon city lights. But they went on to say that when the time comes, funding, needed funding to build that, taking the replacement of the coverage on the lines.
Okay. Uh, one, I will wait until approaching the statement for this other part, but remind me about, uh, problems they don't have about competition apart as well as about very difficult. All right, Becky, do we have any public comments?
Nothing has been submitted online and I didn't receive anything in the mail.
Okay. I would seek a motion to read ordinance six one six, six one seven, six one eight by title only.
But we, we ordered six one six, six one seven and six one eight by title only.
I can second that.
Uh, roll call, council.
Hi.
Council.
Hi.
Council four.
Hi, mayor votes, uh.
Motion to read by title only. All three ordinance passes four zero.
All right. Next, this is the second reading of ordinance six one six that one seven point two four and one seven point two eight, uh, correcting Scrivener's errors. Second read, did I pronounce that right?
You did. Excellent.
Eight.
Ordinance six one six, an ordinance of the city of Cape Junction correcting Scrivener's error in the Cape Junction municipal code seventeen point two four point oh three oh and seventeen point two eight point oh three oh. Buildings and uses permitted conditional. That is ordinance six one six.
I would seek a motion to approve or to adopt ordinance six one six.
Thank you.
Motion to adopt ordinance six one six.
Any further discussion? Counselor two?
No.
Counselor three?
No.
Counselor four?
No.
None from the mayor. Roll call, counsel two?
Hi.
Counselor three?
Hi.
Counselor four, Matt? Mayor votes, uh.
Motion to approve or adopt ordinance six one six passes four zero.
Next, we have ordinance six one seven, amending parking regulations to include parking for storage warehouses. I would seek a motion to adopt six one seven.
I should probably read it by title only first.
You could probably read it by that.
Ordinance six one seven, an ordinance of the city of Cape Junction amending municipal code seventeen point three two point oh two oh parking requirements to include parking regulation for storage warehouse. Ordinance six one seven.
Now, seeking a motion to approve ordinance six one seven. Adopt, motion to adopt ordinance six one seven.
I don't think we can adopt.
I second that.
Need further discussion? Counselor two?
No.
Counselor three?
No.
Counselor four?
Yeah.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Yeah. Uh, so I glanced over it through it all. It doesn't affect any current parking restrictions or requirements and now, and it's actually strengths, the requirements for facility now.
So there is no specific requirement for storage warehouses in our code as it exists today.
Even based on square footage of building here.
Right, so we would do something closest is what we would do.
Good.
And what the closest one would require would be an overextended amount of parking for the requirement of a storage place. So we reviewed some storage parking requirements in other cities and this is what we decided to just add to the code. So, and no, it doesn't affect any existing storehouses today. It would be anything that was built in the future would have to meet this requirement.
And it's, uh, actually a lesser standard than what they're currently meeting.
It, it is.
Okay.
Way lesser, yes. Because they don't need to have parking spaces for all those storage units.
The, the way that I read it, we're confined in an already confined area. Okay, so, any further discussion?
No.
Thing like, none from the mayor. We will roll call, council three. Counselor three?
Hi.
Counselor four, Matt? Mayor votes, uh.
Motion to approve ordinance six, adopt ordinance six one seven passes four zero.
Becky, can you please read ordinance six one to be by title only?
Ordinance six one eight. Ordinance six one eight, an ordinance of the city of Cape Junction, amending municipal code thirteen point oh four. And municipal code thirteen point oh eight to address water and sewer systems, extension and visa. That is ordinance six one eight.
Six one eight, motion to adopt, or that's six one eight.
I need to adopt the six one eight.
Second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion?
Yes.
Uh, council two?
No.
Council three?
No.
Council four?
Yes, go ahead. Alright, uh. Hi. The. Changes, have they already been, have there, has there been implementation for current developers or, uh, own property owners already for this?
Yes, so. I, I just, I went over this with Alex, cause he wasn't gonna be in attendance, or actually, I told him not to, to bother coming because it was gonna go quick. Um, this is how it needs to go. And this is how it allows us to follow the regulations that OHA and BEQ and all those people require of us. And so we have been implementing it, but the code has not been specific in saying this is how it is done. So now the code will support what it is that we require.
Got it, and that answered my second question, uh, with education and new information going out to developers or current homeowners that it may possibly affect. You've already been implementing that, so.
Yes.
That is already in the motion, right?
Yes.
All, this is, uh, and I, I am applauding staff for doing this, this was part of the day one request of making sure that we're getting all these cross and all eyes on it, you know, following suit with that, so it's, uh, it's literally just in, in protecting us in the long run, but.
Absolutely, yeah.
So, any further discussion?
No.
Okay, roll call, council two?
Aye.
Council three?
Aye.
Council four?
Aye.
Mayor votes aye.
Motion to adopt ordinance six one eight passes four zero.
Uh, no executive session, uh, closing comments. Council two?
No, I don't really have anything.
Council three?
Of course, could I be last?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
You wanna go before me or after me?
Before you.
Okay. Council four?
I, I do not.
Okay, uh, Becky, yeah.
Um, city hall will be closed at three P M. this Friday, since it's the very last day of the month. Our next council meeting will be June, uh, Monday, June ninth, again at seven o'clock. And our budget committee will be holding its first session on April eighteenth here at city hall at six P M. Oh, yeah, maybe June. I don't know why I wrote April, that's weird. Yes, June eighteenth, thank you for the correction, and that's all I have.
You know?
I'm not, okay.
I can go, if you have a few more minutes?
Go.
Okay. So, uh, splash pad is open, hours have been adjusted, um, at the park. And so wanted to, uh, wanted to announce that, and then I would really like to see a Blackberry Festival happen, certainly. And so we can have a conversation with the chambers, we can have a conversation with, uh, with whoever we feel like we need to. Reach out to your network, let's see if there's a nonprofit or somebody else that wants to step in and partner with the city, we don't have a budget from the city, so it needs to be ran independently, but I would be in full support. Of a Blackberry Festival returning in mid to late August with booths and old school dance, the whole ninety yards, downtown Cape Junction. Neighbors being neighbors, Blackberry Festival, um. I just, it's something that was near and dear to my heart, it's something that I had ran on that I'd like to see returned. And I would be in full support if we need to do a workshop, we need to do a town hall, we need whatever we need to do, without network wire, if we do what we can do there. Uh, the next thing, if you can get me the dates and the band names, uh, you know, from the offering in the park, I will generate AI fires and make those posted to social media. I wanted to apologize to John, we had some, uh, we had some stuff happening with our social media, not ours, but made it specifically with some of the, some of the cities. Most cities weren't able to post for a three week period. And so it had nothing to do with us, but it is resolved, now we can post again, and I want to use our social media platform, so if, if parks and red have anything they want to get out of there, the city's been doing a good job of getting stuff. Let's, uh, let's blow up our social media and make sure that we're using that tool as we, uh, as we see fit. Gonna be in the nineties this weekend, um, I know that there was a fire in Kirby today, let's make sure that we get our weeds under control, I know that I'm, I mowed this last weekend, and we'll be mowing again, my personal stuff, make sure to use fire breaks and get. Summer's coming quick, so be ready. And that is it for me. Jean Anne, go ahead.
Um, along with the fire warning, there is, uh, an event Thursday afternoon at the fire district. That I'm trying to remember the times, but anyway, if you call a fire district, you can get that.
It's posted, there's a flyer on the counter.
Excellent, there's a flyer out there, anyway, um, and it would be really beneficial for people to know what's going on, um. I have had several talks with county people about emergency management and about plans for this, um, fire season, and I was at a. Um, Pacific Power Wildfire Mitigation, uh, forum. And spoke with the director of Oregon Emergency Management.
Yeah, Chris.
Um, about that very idea, and, um. She said she would contact the fellow and, and having that touch, thinking hasn't, so of course I need to call him. Um, but I'm really concerned, I know a lot of our people are, just down the street from where I live at Crossroads, um, that hospital. That is overrun with wild, um, grass, and it's, it is a fire waiting now, and, uh. All we need is something like that to spark in the middle of the city, and it could really. Ruin our whole year, so, um, anyway, um, there is a. This Saturday is a Take Back Tire Day. And another one, and there will also be on June twenty eighth, a cleanup Kirby Main Line event. Um, you can reach City Palacios from the Farmer's Market, Ecological. I don't remember what their community is actually called, but she has all the details about it. Uh, it seems like it would be a great thing because, and we, uh, when I went to Solid Waste Agency, we talked about. Some advertisements, uh. And the Kirby Main Line problem in general, and I brought out that I think a lot of people here don't know what hours. Kirby, the transfer station is open, and so when they load up their truck or whatever on a Sunday and they want to get rid of it. They'll dump it in the forest because it's not open then, it's only open Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, and Saturday till three P M. And it's really. An issue, so we're going to look into getting some signage to make that more obvious and get some things on social media and, um, other, some other things done. So we're hoping that by advertising it more, that will help, because right now. That transfer station gets subsidized by over quarter million dollars a year. Um, because we just don't bring in enough. Our authority doesn't bring in enough to support that, but. So we've been really lucky that our commissioners have not pulled the plug on it, but it is a definite possibility that could happen.
So why is it up to the commissioners?
Because they okay the franchise agreement, and they're the ultimate.
They're the signers on the lease. But.
So it all, I'm sorry?
They canceled a couple of them from years ago, I don't know.
Well, and, and one thing somebody brought up for me was, oh, why don't we get a big dumpster and have a location in CJ where people can do that, and I raised my hand and I said, absolutely, that is a big no-no. Uh, one, you'll never get approval from the city, and number two, that goes contrary to everything we're trying to do in the city, and it is not okay, so I said, I will help with some of the advertising. So that we can get people to know when the transfer station is open, but, um. There'll also be new items that in July, that you'll be able to put in your recycling bins. Um, I've been attending some Zoom meetings for several months about it. But it, as always, BEQ isn't quite ready for a big league, so it'll happen anyway, um. We are a very wonderful community, and I love our valley, and I love how quirky and. What characters we have here in, in our, um, valley, and I think part of that is because of how much art. We produce, because a lot of people are very creative in this community, and so, um, for Jean Anne's gem tonight is art is the voice of the heart. So I want you to go out and create some sort of art. And it's healthy, it's helps with your mental health, and it just feels nice, and you never know, you may discover a new talent that you never knew had. So, those are my comments.
Uh, Ethan is online, Ethan, do you have any closing statements?
Yes, my sincerest apologies for being late, I got locked out of my city box and was unable to join, uh, in a timely fashion, so those are my comments.
Thank you, Ethan, uh, one, one last thing that just reminded me, I wanted to give a public, uh, public shout out to two of my baseball captains, our season ended last night, um. About five hundred miles northeast of here, so we got back at three A M. this morning. We, uh, we had two of our team captains, both graduating seniors, uh, Zach Hugus, my son, and Bryson Gilmore. That went eight miles up Happy Camp Road and cleaned up a dump site. And so they did a phenomenal job, uh, Bryson picked his truck, they clubbed up, and there was, I think it was twenty eight bags worth of trash, then they manually picked up, and then I paid, we had time. And so using the transfer station, it's. It's disgusting. What is happening, and so I would, I would really like to see that, that get cleaned up, uh, Jean Anne, for the events that you listed, if you want to have them email me flyers, I'm happy to share them, so. Alright, I would seek a motion this time to adjourn. Being adjourned seven thirty.